Well, good morning, everyone. I wanted to welcome you to another Council President press conference. Let me just say that we now have finality in our county council makeup going into the general election. I did have a chance to talk to Democratic nominee Tom Hucker, and he's very excited about the potential of him joining the council. I have meetings with a number of our Democratic nominees to talk to them a little bit about what it is that we're looking to try and accomplish over the next four years, as well as some of the things that they are looking to try and accomplish as well. And so, we want to make sure that come November, there's a very smooth transition. I've met with our council vice president Leventhal, who, as we all know, normally our council vice president accedes to become president, and so had a great conversation with him about some of the transition aspects leading into next year. So, I'm very excited. We find ourselves in a very good place where I think that we'll have a great team should everybody prevail in November, and we'll be moving forward into another great four years. That being said, a lot of those things that we're trying to accomplish over these next four years involve the future of the county and what direction we're headed in. Next week, I'll be meeting with the county executive to talk to him about some of the things that he's looking to try and set forth should he prevail in November in the general election as well. And we also have started conversations about potential dates for a meeting between the county council, the Montgomery County delegation to Annapolis, as well as the school board, all of our leadership to really come up with a greater understanding of what our objectives are for next year leading into Annapolis. It's something that I've talked about for a number of years that I think is extremely important for us. I think the last time we met as a large group was leading into the 2007 special session, and I was really honing in on making sure that we did something like this again, especially being that we have a new governor that's coming into the governor's house and wanted to make sure that we were very clear in terms of what our objectives will be and what we wanted to see that we try and accomplish for not only this next session, but for the next four years should Governor Democratic gubernatorial candidate Brown should prevail in November as well. And so, I really think that there's a lot of promise that's there in us working together. I've talked to a number of the newly elected delegates as well and congratulated them and also talked about how important it is for us to maintain what I think has started off as a great relationship this year and wanting to see that continue and grow and foster because we are all in this together. We all represent Montgomery County, and we all have priorities that need to be met when it comes to our constituents and some of the things that they're most concerned about. When it comes to the White Oak Plan, just to let you know, we are still moving forward. I think that, again, it's really going to be a tough road for us, but one that I think is well warranted. As I said to you in the previous press conference, this is a priority for us. It is extremely important for us to make sure that an area like our East County really gets its just desserts in terms of making sure that we're bringing it along when it comes to revitalization and us really moving forward. And so, from that respect, I think that many of us here in this county are looking forward to this White Oak Plan to be a catalyst for an East County revitalization. And so, with that, that's pretty much all I have for this week. It was a great day for our celebration of our independence. I heard some preliminary numbers that were roughly about 12,000 people, record numbers, at our Wheaton fireworks for the county and for Germantown Glory, which I had the pleasure of hosting, about 24,000 people. It was a huge turnout, ran into many people that had come there for the first time, and so it's a great celebration to be able to say that, you know, we're bringing members of the community together and doing it under the lights of celebrating something as great as our nation's independence. So, it was a great weekend for us. Unfortunately, had a couple of pedestrian incidents, and we will be following up. I've talked to our police. Many of you know that I'm very passionate about our pedestrian fatalities and always trying to figure out ways in which we can do more to reduce those kinds of incidents. So, we'll continue to be working on that and making sure that our Department of Transportation has what it needs to be responsive to some of those concerns. So, with that, I'll open up to questions.
Greg, could you talk to Delegate Hucker about White Oak? It is presumably to be in his district. Did he express any strong feelings about one way or another, and is he going to have any input into the council deliberations on this even though he's, you know, not really there yet?
Well, we had just a very brief conversation about it, but he's wanting to gain more experience and understanding of what the plan truly entails, what that's going to mean for the future. I think that after our meeting that we will have this week, we'll be able to talk a little bit more, and I'll get a better idea of what some of the priorities are that he might be looking at. Again, between Councilmember Branson, who's currently there and has been a member of that community for a very long time, I think that the residents of District Five are aptly represented, but certainly will take all that into consideration, you know, with him being a constituent as well. Just from that aspect, he has a role in terms of seeing and shaping what the future is. But as far as seeing something a little bit different in terms of what his concerns are, he didn't address anything from that aspect in terms of the direction we're trying to head in. I think that all of us really feel as though we really want to try and do more to make sure that we're bringing the East County forward.
What's the timeline for White Oak? Are you hoping to get this through this month?
I am, I am. My objective is to make sure that we do this before, you know, we have a blackout period when it comes to when we can't bake land use decisions leading into an election, and so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to resolve any outstanding issues, concerns that we have and move forward with a vote before we reach that blackout period.
So, the vote tomorrow that would extend it to September back in like '15, is that something you do not support?
No, I mean, that still leaves us right in line with where we are in terms of still being outside of the blackout period. So, you know, from that aspect, that's really not as much of a concern of mine. My major concern is to make sure that, again, if people have some issues, things that they want to see changed, let's bring those up and get them resolved and then move forward. I mean, you know, there, now, if there's, and I haven't heard this to this point, but if there is some objective or some objection, I'm sorry, to the plan as a whole in terms of what we want to see, then that would be something very different. But from what I've heard from some of my colleagues to this point, tweaks here and there, you know, little things that they'd like to see changed, that along those lines doesn't mean that somehow we would then say, okay, we're not going to move forward with this plan. I think that, for the most part, the majority of members are very supportive and really want to see us move forward with White Oak.
Are there any risks in moving this quickly compared to how quickly it normally would have been?
Again, if this were something where we weren't truly dotting all i's and crossing all t's, looking at this very closely, there would be a difference, but I don't see that as being the case. People have been looking at White Oak for a very, very long time just before, not just since this plan has come about. And so, from that perspective, I really think that, and again, the issues that are being raised, it shows that those issues are more of the minor ones, that are more tweaks than they are actual largess, you know, objections to the overall theory or, you know, overall support of the plan. That's not the case, and so I think that speaks to the fact that this is something that pretty much is, you know, do you support growth in the White Oak area? Do you support us bringing some more economic development and sustainability to this region? Do you support some additional housing options for people? Those are things that I think that the majority of council members support, and so therefore, I don't really see it as more of a, you know, concern about the overall plan, just more about some of the details.
So, Council President, you said earlier, I just think that you plan to meet with the candidates for the council, and have you been, have you been searched?
Not at this point. You know, typically, let's see here, back in 2006, I unseated the last Republican here in Montgomery County. You know, so from that perspective, if, you know, one of those Republican nominees certainly is successful in November, I would sit down and talk with him as well. But in just looking at my projections of where folks are in terms of the turnout numbers and in terms of the votes, I look at all the elections from previous years as well. Everybody pretty much looks like they're most likely prevail, but of course, you know, we never know. So, I always say, you know, that we wait until November to make any kind of final judgments, but at the same time, I think that overall for us, it really represents something where we need to have those meetings and talk about some of the priorities so we can get a little bit ahead of the game, so we can understand what some of their objectives are.
So, is that the same with the Maryland delegation? Is it going to be Republicans in other seats?
Not at this point, again, just because, like I said, when I was with the Maryland House of Delegates, I unseated the last Republican. I just don't see any of those candidates from the numbers that I've seen in early voting and then also from the numbers last year, or not last year, but last election, that would rise to the level of concern. Plus, a lot of folks are unopposed. I mean, in District Three, there is no Republican that's running. The person who's running against me is also running for Central Committee, so they're running for two positions, which is legal, you know, but it's along those lines that we're, you know, really focused on the Democratic candidates at this point.
So, there seems to be a consensus in local times that Republicans don't have a chance. Do you think that could have to...
I mean, anything's possible, and that's the reason why we don't automatically assume that they'll be the person. That's why in all of my comments, I make sure that we say that, you know, we have to wait until November. You know, no one thought that I could win my election in 2006. They thought for sure that Jean Cryer was going to be the nominee. She was the number one vote getter and went from being the number one vote getter to being replaced by me. So, I understand from personal experience that there's never an assumption that you should make in those kinds of instances that can't be overcome. You have to work hard and you have to, you know, I think have the swing of the electorate in terms of thinking about a new direction. I personally think that, and we saw it from some of the numbers, with all of the incumbents returning, that Montgomery County is very happy with the people who are leading them right now, and they're happy that the direction that the county's going in. I think that this election was a statement of that, and so I think that, from that aspect, I think that we'll probably see those folks return through the November election as well.
When do you expect to pick a planning board chair?
So, we have our interviews, and probably within a week after that, you know, I'd gotten a question whether or not we were going to make a vote immediately after the interviews, and I thought that something like this warrants us making sure that we take the appropriate amount of time to digest all of the answers. I anticipate each interview will take somewhere around 45 minutes to an hour. There have been some people who have said that they have some additional questions that they want to ask beyond the standard questions that we ask all of the candidates, and so from that perspective, it might take a little bit longer. I really want to make sure that all of my colleagues have an opportunity to really digest that before we make the decision. So, it would probably be within a week after that.
Can you share some of the questions you have for some of the candidates? What's important to you?
We actually will be releasing those questions. They were already sent to the candidates, and so that is public. I'll make sure that we get copies of those for all of you.
But just for purposes now, again, is there something that stands out to you, like, look, they have to be looking at, you know, a new urban look for Montgomery County? Do they have to hold the line on, you know, protecting the agricultural reserve? What do you see that is critically important?
I mean, what I try to do in terms of the questions that I ask as council president are more in line with where the county is as a whole. When you talk about some of the personal issues related to the agricultural reserve, things like that are important to me. This is the first year in, or the first time, actually. It's interesting that you bring that up, that I have met with every single candidate. When we've done any kind of interviews with folks before, I've never met with them on an individual basis. I believed that the interview process was enough and didn't want to somehow give an opportunity for one to maybe have a better standing than another in terms of meeting with me on a personal level. But in this instance, I felt that it was extremely important for me to talk with each candidate and identify some of the things personally because I won't be, as the council president, able to address some of those particular issues and ask my questions because I'll be asking the generic council questions at that point. And so, I had my questions answered, some of them involving economic development, some of them involving the imbalance of jobs and housing in the Up County, as well as involving protection of our agricultural reserve. And so, those were issues that were important to me that I was able to address with those candidates.
Was that a face-to-face meeting at Trump House?
It was. I had a meeting with each of them, and pretty much every single council member, I think, has met with all of the candidates. I'm not sure if some of them haven't, but I've seen all of the candidates sitting out there, and so that's one of the things that oftentimes a lot of folks do in terms of just getting a gauge of where they are on particular issues.
Is it me, or has there been a bit of a churn on the planning board? You had Wes Hanson, you had a gentleman who went up to Canada, and then Prince Wexner. Are you looking to stabilize that a little bit, or...
Well, we certainly, you know, it's interesting that you bring that up because one, a person who was just in the community, not one of my colleagues, had mentioned about making sure that this person actually was going to stay as planning board chair and not eventually go off and then run for office and create another hole in the planning board. And I said, wow, I hadn't thought about that. It's very interesting, kind of like what we did with Ms. Branson, but the opposite. Well, no, yeah, the same way, in terms of saying that this person couldn't run for office. And I don't think that we're headed in that direction, but it is something that does, we really want a person who's committed to Montgomery County, who's committed to the future of Montgomery County, who's committed to rolling up their sleeves and working to make this department even better than it is now, and that requires a level of commitment and stability that happens over time. And so, from that aspect, that certainly is something that is important to us.
Would you ask for an eight-year commitment if the person was, you know, they ended up being reappointed? Would you expect them to accept the appointment?
I don't think we could do that. I don't think it would be fair or reasonable. You know, what we really would want to do is just impart to them that they have a commitment, kind of what I just said to Kate. I think that that's really where we want to be in terms of their understanding, but to ask for a commitment, I think, is a little bit much when it comes to this kind of a position that we really wouldn't ask for anybody else to do the same. So, you know, it certainly rises to the level of something that is concerning, and we do want a person, you know, so it might be something that a council member might bring up and just say, hey, you know, this is important to us, just to make sure that they're aware. But from beyond that, I don't think that we'll get to that sort of level.
So, you guys finally reached an agreement with the Clarksville delegation. Have you guys considered a timeline to finally complete that?
Yeah, we're actually, now that we've just finalized with Newland over a settlement agreement, now the timeline begins, and so we're laying out some of the things. Some of them were actually slated to start as early as a couple days ago in terms of the process, so the clock is already ticking in terms of what they need to do when it comes to some of the roads and some of the other amenities that are there, sidewalks, et cetera. And so, we're excited about the fact that we continue to try and move things forward when it comes to Clarksville. Again, what I said was, is that once we had everything kind of behind us with the Town, with the Timmy Mall Creek master plan discussion, that we would then continue to try and deliver to Clarksville what Clarksville was promised, and part of that was this most recent settlement with Newland, so we can ensure that we're moving forward with Town Center and the other ancillary amenities that go along with that.
So, how do you plan to make sure things that happen to stop the initial construction don't happen?
Well, I mean, you know, part of it is that with this settlement agreement, there are, you know, we're holding funds. You know, beyond that, there's really not much more we can do beyond holding funds in lieu to make sure that the job is completed. So, you know, if they don't complete them in a timely manner or live up to the parts of the settlement, then we keep their bonds that they've floated, and we could do the work ourselves. And so, that's the protection that we have. Does it mean that it guarantees that it's going to be exactly at that time? No, but that's pretty much with any developer that's here that has things that they've, and that's anywhere. There's no way that you can absolutely guarantee that it's going to be built exact, at that particular time. There are all kinds of things that happen. You know, the economy crashes, the construction company that they, you know, contracted with goes out of business. I mean, those kinds of things happen, and so then your timeline's a little bit off. But as long as you have the way in which to make sure that you're protected in terms of holding those funds, at least you know that it will be completed within a reasonable amount of time.
So, this is one of the two factors that compare with shoddy construction. How well do you bet these companies?
I'm not sure what you mean about shoddy construction.
Like, so it's playing twenty-seven, you know, the head has some construction projects, and then the Clarksville has some construction projects too. So, do you bet these companies, or do you eye them to make sure, you know, do you work with their other employees?
Well, let me just say that my office, and we in the county council, are in charge of when it comes to companies. That's Department of General Services and then the county executive that oversee any companies that are doing work with the county. But that being said, I don't see it as shoddy. I see Newland as a company who actually came in and wasn't really truly committed, I think, to the community of Clarksville. When I first came into office, I had a meeting with Newland and told Newland just that, that I thought that their commitment wasn't there and that they needed to leave. And immediately after that, Newland sold to Third Try, and we've been moving forward with that company ever since. So, I think that, you know, when it comes to myself and my office in terms of the ability of us to do what we can to make sure that we're delivering and really making sure we continue to move Clarksville forward, you know, the record's very clear. Silver Spring Transit Center happened before I came to the council. We've certainly been trying to hold the appropriate folks who we think, in our eyes, made mistakes feet to the fire, and that will happen with a lawsuit. And so, I think that, you know, all of us have been very strong in terms of protecting the interests of Montgomery County and Montgomery County taxpayers, to the extent that many of my comments, as well as the county executives, have been that none of this should be at the taxpayer's expense when it comes to Silver Spring, but not even representing that area and not being involved in the process, I really can't, you know, give you more than that in terms of saying, you know, about where my involvement has been.
The meeting next Monday with the education committee and the various folks, there's going to be a OLO report coming out that day as well. Give us a sound someone's going to help you with.
Well, I think, look, this has always been about making sure that folks understand that we don't claim that we're perfect, that we have things that we continue to need to do better, and I think that overall, you know, the school system has already acknowledged some of the challenges that they faced with the persistent achievement gap. We'll be looking forward to the presentation that the school board gives us in terms of what their expectations are about really moving the needle and a timeframe for how quickly those things will be done, something that I've asked for before in the past and I'm hoping to get an answer for in terms of, you know, when we expect to see results. And I don't think that that's unreasonable to ask. I'm not saying that it has to happen in one year. The achievement gap didn't happen in one year, and so I don't expect it to be solved in a year. But at the same time, I think that overall for us, it really needs to be one in which we do start to ask for when we should expect to see results. And I think that, look, when it comes to making sure that we're approaching this from all different aspects, whether it's hiring teachers that are more reflective of the diversity that we find in our school system, whether it's making sure that we have a curriculum and testing that's more appropriate to the lesson, you know, recently, and I'm not sure who reported on the story, whether it was the Gazette or Post, that I had read about us changing the results on some tests that we found that a large number of students had failed. I'm not sure if that's putting us in the right direction. And so, again, it's really understanding what we expect to see, which is a quality school system that we put a lot of money into, that's going to educate all of our children and give them a level of success so that they can do whatever it is that they want to do, whether it's career or college ready, and make sure that we're delivering that for each and every student. And, you know, that's what we need to move forward to making sure happens. And so, it's my hope that with this meeting, we'll start to see some of those steps that are going to be laid out to get us there.
Well, in terms of leadership, do you want to see Dr. Starr stay on as superintendent? And do you get the feeling that the board will ask him to stay on when the time comes?
I'm not sure. I think that that's something that is ultimately up to the board to decide. I mean, that's their decision. I think that, again, you know, they have to make their decisions just as we make our decisions when it comes to our planning board chair about a number of things that are priorities for them that will continue to move us forward. And so, from that aspect, I won't weigh in in terms of saying whether or not Dr. Starr should stay or go. I think that he certainly has come up with some very interesting conversations about some things that will be able to help us in making our school system a much better school system, and so along those lines, you know, but from day-to-day operations, which I think are a key part of really analyzing whether or not a superintendent is doing a good job, I don't have enough of the knowledge of those day-to-day operations to evaluate whether or not he'd be a candidate worthy of staying or not.
Does the council or the county bear any responsibility for things like the achievement gap and these new test score results where we're changing that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. This is all of us. Look, while, you know, we continue to have a conversation about, well, the school board's elected and they need to do what they need to do to make sure that the achievement gap is solved, you know, we've talked about it when it comes to Excel Beyond the Bell programs, when it comes to Linkages to Learning, when it comes to all the things that the county does, so we bear some responsibility. I think that we're stepping up to the plate and trying to do what we can in providing additional resources and funding to make sure that we're addressing some of the issues of the achievement gap. Ultimately, it's us as community stakeholders, you know, as community stakeholders, regardless of whether or not you have a vote to actually, you know, change a program or whatever the case may be, it's advocacy, and that's why we're holding this meeting. That's the reason why we're doing the things that we're doing. That's why you see that the council's actually stepping up and doing a little bit more in terms of its involvement with the school system that always was seen as hands-off, but this is a partnership, and the only way we're going to get out of this very large and persistent and pervasive problem is for us to do it together. And I think that that's why, again, for my aspect, the partnership piece is so important that we need to be rolling up our sleeves together and saying, we are going to do this. We are going to make a difference. We are going to make sure that every child matters and is able to be successful.
Would you like to see a model like they have in Prince George's County where the county executive actually selects the CEO of the schools and there's a partnership in who gets to pick who for the Board of Education?
At this point, I am mainly focused on making sure that we can do whatever we need to do to move our school system forward. I'm not looking for some sort of change in how our structure is at this point. My major focus is for us to, you know, really try and move that needle and make sure that we're educating all of our kids.
You mentioned more funding. Is throwing more money at this really the solution? I mean, has not Montgomery County overfunded MOE historically to almost excessive levels? You talked to, like, the taxpayer league folks. I mean, we were seeing increases of, what, 500, 60% over MOE, yet we still have this achievement gap. Is money the...
Well, keep in mind, when I'm talking about money, I'm talking about the county's commitment to money when it comes to expanding our high school wellness centers, our Linkages to Learning program, Excel Beyond the Bell to more schools. That's what I'm actually talking about. George B. Thomas Learning Academy on the weekends, so that's where I'm talking about the additional money. I'm not talking about necessarily funneling more additional money into the school system. What I've always said is you have to justify and show that what you're doing is working for me to then ask for and give you more... for me to then ask for and give you more money. So when I ask for results, and I said that at the beginning of this discussion, I think that's what's most important. If you're showing me that you're achieving results and you have a particular plan in place that's achieving those results, then we can talk about how we expand that program and seeing what those results, you know, hoping we can then mirror those results in other areas.
And who's going to be at the table for this discussion?
We're hoping to have everybody there, from our school board to the superintendent, to some community stakeholders as well, our OLO. You know, this is really something in which we need to have a very broad-based discussion of what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And at this point, there's really no, it should be the approach of no stone left unturned. You know, this is something that many communities struggle with. It's not just here in Montgomery County, and I have to acknowledge that. So, you know, my work with Dr. Ivory Tolson, who's the author of Breaking Barriers, who was called to the White House to do a symposium on the education and challenges associated with educating black males in our community. I mean, this is what this is all about. This is something that's much larger than us, but we really have to make sure that us, and Montgomery County is oftentimes throughout the nation, seen as a leader in education, we need to be able to be very creative and innovative in terms of our thinking. And I hope that some of the ideas and plans that we have can then be implemented elsewhere to make sure that all kids throughout the nation, not just here in Montgomery County or in the state of Maryland, can benefit from some of the things that we're able to find.
Can I ask you about, Prince George's County had a loss last week of Wayne Curry. You were a delegate when he was in office. He's seen as someone who really was a change agent, talked about schools and funding, et cetera. Doug Duncan said yes until he went to Indianapolis and said, look, fork over some money because Baltimore's getting too much. How would you weigh his impact here in Montgomery County? Because people here tend to go Prince George's, that's that county over there.
Well, Ben, the interesting thing about Wayne is that Wayne realized that you need to reach out, that you can't just isolate yourself and say that I am Prince George's and that's what it's all about. He was always one that was not only a change agent, but also realized that this picture is much larger than yourself, that we have, that we all operate in this together. And that really is one of the reasons why I founded the Washington Metropolitan Regional Council Chairs. It's about understanding that and saying that we're all in this together. We all need to come together to share ideas, to talk about some of the challenges, just what we talked about in terms of the achievement gap. Those are things that are, you know, pervasive throughout. Our drug issues and the challenges that we face in stemming some of our drug challenges. It's not just in Prince George's or just in Montgomery. When it comes to sex trafficking and the things that we're looking to do there, when it comes to really getting a handle on sex trafficking in this region, it requires all of us together. And so those are the kinds of things, that's the spirit of Wayne. He actually reached out to a number of us and called us on our cell phones when he was sick. And I remember that he said, you know, keep doing what you're doing because you need to make sure that people realize that we're all in this together, and it matters. It matters a lot. So I think he did a phenomenal job at really spearheading what is important for us in working together. So. All right. Well, thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it.